Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to our pre-meeting briefing for Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees with our meeting starting at 6:00 PM. The purpose of this meeting is to conduct a briefing session with administrative staff regarding our posted meeting agenda for tonight. And for the record, let's notify everybody who's here. Marjorie Barnes is here, Carolyn Benavides, Kim Brady, Eliana Garza-Rojas, Cassandra Hatfield, Tara Herbacheck, and me. I'm Randy Shackman. And so we are all here. We constitute a quorum, and we can go from there. First item on our agenda is Audience for Guests. Actually, it's recognitions. I practiced that all week, and I still screwed it up. Oh, well. The first thing is our recognitions time. And Ms. Barnell?
Well, good evening, Mr. Shackman, Dr. Eldridge, and members of the board. Tonight, we are excited to welcome the following new administrators to the CFP family. First up, we'd like to introduce Danielle Ford. She is the new principal at Polk Middle School. Ms. Ford has been a part of the CFP family for nine years, and most recently, she served as the assistant principal at Creekview High School. And her family's here. They want to stand up as well to be recognized.[134.88][134.88](APPLAUSE). Next, we have Dr. Tuette Hoon. She's the executive director of multilingual and academic programs. She has 24 years of experience in education, and her experience includes classroom teaching at various district levels and administrative roles that have involved multilingual education. Next, we'd like to introduce you to Dorothy Ortiz. She's the new elementary school principal at Good Elementary, and she has 22 years of experience in education. She comes to us from Ector County, where she served as a principal. Ms. Ortiz is also a proud veteran, having served in Operation Enduring Freedom.[184.48][184.48](APPLAUSE). And her family is here, too. Next, we have Aguada Paredes. She's the director of Human Resources. Aguada most recently served as the principal at Good Elementary. She has been a part of the CFP family for the past eight years and is also a CFP alumni. Dr. Tammy Smalskus is the new assistant superintendent of Human Resources. She has approximately 30 years of experience in education, having served in various roles from being a classroom teacher and high school principal to senior director of curriculum and an assistant superintendent. Welcome. We're so glad to have you.[231.62][231.62](APPLAUSE). And next, we have Lori Tranum. She's the director of federal programs and professional development. Lori has been a member of the CFP family since January 2023 and has worked in education for more than 20 years. We are so excited to have all of you, and congratulations on your new roles. And we will have an opportunity for pictures with your family after the meeting. Congratulations again.[262.41][262.41](APPLAUSE).
Welcome aboard. Thank you for all that you are continuing to do for education and for our district. I'm not sure how you're pulling that off, but people with 20 and 30 years' experience look like they're about 24 years old, so that's a pretty good deal.[282.33][282.33](LAUGHING). We're glad you're here. And now on our agenda is Audience for Guests, and I don't think we have any forms. So we have none of those, so we'll move on our agenda to item number four, administrative reports. And Dr. Eldridge, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Our first item up for discussion, item 5C, our finance reports. Mr. Martin?
Yes. The finance reports are, there's, since our workshop that we had with the board, we haven't seen any significant changes or unanticipated changes. We believe that we won't have a deficit that will run estimated between $7 and $8 million. We think that's about where we're going to land at the end of the year. And really, that's kind of my summary, but if there's any specific questions you have about the report, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
You're still on the honeymoon with us?
Yes, I am, yes.[352.12][352.12](LAUGHING). Yes, I'm still using that excuse often.
There you go. Thank you very much.
Okay. Next, Kristin Hess with our approval matters regarding meal charging.
Good evening, Dr. Eldridge, Mr. Shackman, and esteemed members of the board. My name is Kristin Hess, and I'm the director of student nutrition. This evening, I'm here to talk to you about agenda items 5T and 5U, including matters of meal charging and also the meal pricing for the upcoming school year. Okay. So I just want to give you a little bit of history here on how our breakfast revenue works and then also how our lunch revenue works. So as you guys know, we have about 57% of our district are students that qualify for free benefits, 10% that qualify as reduced, and then the remaining 33% are qualified as paid. Now, that may be because they chose to fill out an application and didn't qualify, or it may be because they know they won't qualify and did not complete an application. Okay? So our revenue comes from two different places. One, from the students and parents. That's our sales revenue, and that is set by us. We get to determine how much we will charge each of the students that qualify for free, reduced, and paid benefits. The second source is from the federal government, which is where the larger quantity of our revenues here in this district, because of our economically disadvantaged percentage, come from. So just to give you a little perspective there, for a free child, we get $0 from the parents and students. That's what makes them the free eligibility. And we get $2.84 from the federal government for those students. Then for reduced students, we can charge up to a maximum of $0.30. And then for the reduced students, we get $2.54. This is for breakfast from the federal government. Then for the paid students, we get significantly less. You'll see that purple amount for the paid students is $0.39 compared to the $2.84 that we get from the federal government for a free student. So as you can see, to make each of those meals worth about the same amount of revenue, we have to make up the difference in what we get from the federal government with how much we charge to the paid students, paid and reduced students. Okay? So as of last year, we were charging $2.25 for breakfast. So as you can see, that breakdown comes out to about $2.84 for every free student, $2.84 for every reduced student, and $2.64 for every paid student. So approximately the same. However, TDA allows us to make the reduced price for students at breakfast $0, which we did back in 2017, 2018. Okay? They, however, also at breakfast allow us to make the paid price $0. So that is something that we're actively looking to do for '24, '25. There are a lot of obstacles for breakfast participation. A handful of those are a limited meal service time. That first bell has to ring. We have to get those students to that first class period, and we want to be very intentional about that. But sometimes a bus runs late. Sometimes mom's running late. Sometimes dad's running late. So for scheduled and anticipated reasons, sometimes the amount of time that a student has to eat breakfast is limited. Student drop-off and traffic flow. Obviously, we want to make sure the students get safely to the classroom versus wandering around the halls, so sometimes that means there's less time for them to get to the cafeteria from where they're dropped off. Tardiness, again, as we know, they tend to be late. And then cost. So we know cost is an obstacle for parents. So a lot of times, if we're running late in the morning and it's going to be 2:25, what do we do? We just skip breakfast, correct? But despite all of that, we know that there are so many benefits to eating breakfast each and every day. There's lower risk of obesity. There's improved concentration during, especially at school. There's better performance and retention of information, and there's improved health and energy levels. So so many benefits to consuming breakfast, but unfortunately, quite a few obstacles as well. So to make breakfast more accessible to our CFP ISD students, we've already set the cost of breakfast to $0. So we were trying to really capture more of those reduced students who could benefit from a free breakfast. We also piloted secondary breakfast cards this past year at four of our secondary schools and with great success, so we're actually looking to expand them out to the remainder of the secondary schools. We provide courtesy breakfast, so if you've hit that charging limit, we still allow you to take the breakfast that you've selected in the morning. So we are still providing a great breakfast option for even those students who've reached that negative balance limit. And then we had also extended universal free breakfast to 19 campuses. Texas mandates that we actually extend it to every campus that has an economically disadvantaged percentage of 80% or higher, but we went ahead and went that extra step further because we have a lot of schools that teeter around that 80%. So we dropped that percentage to 75% and went ahead and extended it to all campuses that had 75% eco-dis or above. But we still feel like there's plenty of obstacles. Despite all of those opportunities and all that accessibility that we offer, we still only serve about 20% of our enrolled students' breakfast. So new this year, we would like to make breakfast free to all of our students here in the district. So just eliminate that paid cost for students because it's allowable per TDA. So we're very, very excited that hopefully that will get breakfast into the hands of more students in addition to all of these other things that we're doing to attempt to do so. We've met with the principals. We've met with the secretaries. We're really working on a great plan to try and get more students to eat that breakfast so that they can have a successful day in the classroom. Okay? So to move on from that, I think we are, there we go. Okay? So universal breakfast district-wide obviously comes with a lot of perks. Number one, it alleviates the burden on parents to have to pay for breakfast, right? And if I don't have to pay for breakfast, I might get up a little earlier in the morning. So we're hoping that that also makes parents more inclined to be on time for school and make sure their children are on time for school as well. It's more equitable than partial universal breakfast. So at the moment, we had half of our schools that were getting free breakfast. Now it will be all of our schools. It does not matter what the economic disadvantaged percentage of your campus is. Additionally, we know that means there's better performance at school if we eat breakfast, and our student success rates hopefully will reflect that. It encourages a timely drop-off. Again, if I know I can get my breakfast free for my student instead of having to swing by Starbucks or Dunkin' Donuts or McDonald's, I'm more inclined to get them there on time so they have time to eat it. It reduces meal shaming. Obviously, our intent is to make sure every student gets a meal regardless of what their circumstances are at home, so our hope is always to try to eliminate any embarrassment for the student. And it also allows students to eat more lunch meals before they reach the charging limit, which is the second part of our presentation this evening. I promise it's shorter.[800.00][800.00](LAUGHING). So now just to look at that from the lunch perspective. TDA has a little bit different rules when it comes to lunch and how we can set those prices. So again, we know our free is 50%, reduced 10%, and paid 33%. So we still have, sorry, my mouse is not working. We still get our revenue from the same two places. It's just that the amounts change. So if we put that in perspective, again, for the free student, we get $0 from the student and parent. We get $4.54 from the federal government. And as you can see, that declines. The amount we get from the federal government declines significantly from a free student to a paid student, which is why, again, we have to charge a paid student for the meal. But of course, TDA has allowed us to eliminate that reduced price, which we did many years ago. Okay? So you can see that we eliminated that $0.40 charge that we would give to parents who qualified for reduced status, which means that as it stands, we make $4.54 for a free student, $4.14 for a reduced student, and $4.03 for a paid student. However, TDA has a different rule when it comes to paid meals for lunches. They say not only can you not eliminate that charge, they say you have to make it equitable across all eligibilities. So to put that in perspective, we know that we're already making $4.54 for a free kid, and we're making $4.03 for a paid kid. Okay? Paid lunch equity says that we cannot allow free students' revenue, which is coming from the federal government, to subsidize paid student revenue. So we have to make those prices equitable such that we're bringing in a comparable amount of income for a paid student as for a free student. So if the average cost of a lunch meal is $4.54, $4.14, and $4.03, then the average meal is going to cost $4.24. If we're only bringing in $4.03 from a paid student, then we know right off the top that a free student's revenue is going to subsidize the amount that we are feeding to the paid students. Does that make sense?[940.43][940.43](LAUGHING). I know it can be a little complicated. So what we are proposing is that we actually raise that paid meal price to $3.75, which is up by 25 cents, and allows us to keep that equitability between the free students, reduced students, and paid students going into this upcoming school year. So our reasoning, and there's several, okay? The first being paid lunch equity. Obviously, the government expects, TDA expects, that we make sure our paid students are not receiving the best quality meals off of the money they're paying us for the free students. So again, we don't want that to be happening. Right now, the average weighted lunch price for paid students is $3.85, but if we don't raise the price by 25 cents to bring it to $3.75, then we are already 35 cents short of what they recommend that we charge a paid student. Inflation. Obviously, you guys know, you go to the grocery store, the cost of everything is greater. And just to put that into a little bit of perspective, back before the pandemic in 2020, an eight-ounce carton of milk was 24 cents. Now, it is 38 cents. And we have to have one for each and every student that comes through the line to make it a reimbursable meal. So you can see that that price is up 59%. I'm going to jump down because you guys can read, but I'm going to jump to that five-compartment black tray, which has to be served with each and every meal. That's what we put our menu items on. As you can see, back in 2020, it was 46 cents. Now it's 58 cents, which doesn't really seem like a large amount until you multiply it across all of the meals that we provide in a given year. Okay? So as you can see, the cost of everything is going up, and people anticipate that the cost of our meals will be too so that we can continue to provide good quality meals to our students. And then lastly, it's really great timing in light of the fact that we would be going district-wide universal breakfast at the same time in the sense that a paid student last year would have spent $2.25 on a breakfast and $3.50 on a lunch, coming to a total of $5.75 a day if you wanted to eat both meals with us. Now that we'd be eliminating the cost of breakfast, they'd spend $0 at breakfast and slightly more, $3.75 at lunch, for a total of still $3.75 a day. So we feel it is a good time to also offset that with this great opportunity we're providing in universal breakfast. Okay? So as you guys can see, this would be the proposal, that we take our current breakfast price of $2.25 and eliminate that for a savings of $2.25 per day for a paid breakfast student. And then at lunch, we would be looking to raise it from $3.50 to $3.75, which is up a quarter, but we usually, when we have to raise meal prices, hope to be able to hold them there for several years before we ask for another increase. And then lastly, just to kind of tack on that, because these two really do go hand-in-hand, we'd be looking to alter our charging policy, which does have to be approved by the board. So our charging policy says that we have to provide a grace period to all students. Currently, our grace period was $17.25 for an elementary student, but in light of the fact that we are eliminating the cost of breakfast, we'd like to make the elementary charging limit $15, which would mean ultimately, they'd have an unlimited number of free breakfasts regardless of what their balance is, and they'd get up to four free lunch meals before they'd start to receive courtesy meals. At secondary schools, it's a little bit lower. At $11.25, it's currently $11.50, so that one's only ever so slightly different. But again, they'd get unlimited breakfast meals and three free lunch meals before they'd begin to receive courtesy meals. Another part of that grace period is that we make many efforts to communicate to households that they have a negative balance. So we would be proposing that we go ahead and continue to do all of those efforts, which are providing a negative balance letter to the households in the elementaries, providing parent square phone calls twice per week for negative households, and also providing office staff with a list of negative balances so that they can support us in getting ahold of those households. So that is what that looks like there, but again, it's in your description of your board items, so it might be a little easier to see there. Any questions?
Board members?
Thank you. I was going to ask, what do they get in the free meal for breakfast?
So for the free meal for breakfast, they get a two-grain or a grain and a protein, and then they also have the opportunity to take two fruits, whether that's two fresh fruits or a fresh fruit and 100% juice. And a milk. Sorry, my apologies. Thank you.
Yes? I'm sorry. I have too much stuff up here. Sorry about that.
It's not a problem.
So I'm really excited about the free breakfast thing. It's such a big deal. That is such a big deal for our kids. I'm very excited. Can I ask, how are we going to notify our parents of that?
So we've already prepared a lot of materials in hopes that you guys would be in agreement this evening. So we do have stickers to pass out every day for breakfast. We've done plenty of calls. We will put it on social media, and we've also prepared flyers that we will distribute at the Back to School Fest and then also have in every campus cafeteria and office.
Thank you. This is very, very exciting. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you. I was going to ask, the cards that you use in middle school, do children just come in and get what they want, or is there a register, or how does that work?
So there is still a point-of-sale because we have to count and claim meals that way. So we still have to identify each student with their student ID number, but we have tried to make those offerings that are on the breakfast cards more of a grab-and-go type because even though sometimes students have had a minimal breakfast at home, maybe they had a couple donut holes, which we all know are not, offering a lot of nutritional value, they can still come to us and get a free breakfast and stick it in their backpack and have it as a mid-morning snack. And we've seen a lot of benefit with that with students who are not following a normal schedule, whether that be they come in earlier for tutorials so they don't get the same opportunity to go to the cafeteria and get a hot breakfast, or students who are in athletics who might just be looking to have additional food even if they got to eat breakfast at 5:00 AM before they came in for practice.
Thank you.
Any other questions, board? Ms. Hess, thank you for that report and continued applause for all of our people that work in cafeteria and food service and nutrition, such an important part of our district.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
That's all.
That's all? All right. Our next item on the agenda is briefing for the regular agenda, if there are any questions or anything we need to take a look at. Yes?
Related to item Q on our consent agenda for tonight, that's specifically the code of conduct. Dr. Eldridge, can we, for planning purposes, can we investigate if there's a reason, if there's anything that prevents us from moving the board approval date of that code of conduct to much earlier so that when our parents start enrolling in the spring, they have the updated documents with the correct year reference?
I can ask Mr. Hamlin to come up and explain that.
I don't need an explanation for that. I just, I mean, let's talk, let's find out and investigate. It's not for tonight. It doesn't mean anything for the approval tonight, but I think, you know, when our parents are enrolling and if we're talking about simplifying and less confusing, when they have approving documents or, you know, signing documents that have '23, '24 school year on them, that leads to confusion. And so if there's nothing that prevents us from approving that '24, or it would be '25, '26 in the spring, let's investigate doing that so that it's up to date when enrollment starts. Please. Thanks.
That's a good suggestion. We'll take a look at that. Anything else? Seeing nothing else, we've reached the end of our agenda for this pre-meeting, and we will adjourn at 6:24. Ladies and gentlemen, we have an announcement to make. As part of our state mandated preparation during the school year, we have to run an emergency training drill. And so I'm gonna ask all of you to please exit from the conference room at this point in time.
Welcome, we're glad that you're here. This is the August School Board meeting and we look forward to working through our agenda. You're welcome to be a part of whatever the meeting is. I would invite us to begin by standing and we have Mr. Jason Davila is going to bring us a message and then Cassandra Hatfield will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then Marjorie Barnes will lead us in the Pledge to Texas Flag.
Before we pray, I just want to take a moment to thank all of you for serving our district. I'm a father of three children in our district, so I really appreciate the time that each of you invest in this community and this school district. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, I acknowledge that you are the God of love, mercy, compassion, and justice. I acknowledge that you, oh Lord, care about this world that we live in, you care about human flourishing, and you care about every person who is part of the CFB ISD community. We thank you for our district leaders and administrators, our principals, our teachers, our coaches, our school staff and personnel, and of course, we thank you for each one of the students who will come through our doors this school year. And so I pray for my brothers and sisters who have been charged to lead this district, grant them much patience, strength, compassion, kindness, and wisdom as they carry out their duties. And we recognize that CFB ISD reflects a diversity of people and beliefs and faith traditions, but grant us to be united in our gratitude, united in our compassion, and united in our commitment to advancing education. In Jesus' name I do pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one
Again, welcome, we're glad that you're here. Board members, district staff, members of the audience, feel free to just enjoy the meeting and get involved as much as you can. We look forward to being as transparent as possible. Both Texas state law requires out of us and also it is the desire of the members of this board. We want our community to know who and what we are and what we are about. And so you'll get to see all of the important parts of the meeting in an open session like this. There are a few things, real estate and some personnel issues and those kinds of things that Texas government code 551 says we are to handle in a closed session, but most of the meeting will be in an open session and we're excited that you are here and you're welcome to see it. For the record, let's start by identifying each of the board members that's here. We have Marjorie Barnes, we have Carolyn Benavides, Kim Brady, Eliana Garza Rojas, Cassandra Hatfield, Tara Herbocic, and I'm Randy Shackman. We are all here, we constitute a quorum and under Texas law, we are capable of doing business for the school district. We are excited about that. Before we go any further, let me remind everyone that Audience for Guests is on our agenda and Audience for Guests is an opportunity that we give to the community for you to come and speak and address the board and if you have an interest, that will be at Audience for Guests time. Now we're going to go to item number two, any special recognitions and presentations? Dawn, I believe that... So then we're going to do the update from PTA.
Committees.
Anybody told me that we had any reports?
Oh, we don't have committees?
We have...
Can we update from the board? Tara?
Okay.
So no particular order, just...
No particular order.
So first, the first one I'm going to report on is the Bond Oversight Committee. This committee met on July 23rd. Five of the community, of the nine community committee members were present. Additionally, there were two board members present, myself, as well as Kim Brady. If you remember, we felt best to add a second board member liaison to this committee in order to spread the wealth of institutional knowledge on bonds and bond activity with the district. Just as a reminder, the purpose of the BOC is to ensure that the projects funded by bond sales and that we move forward with are consistent with the priorities and planning presented to the trustees by the Citizens Bond Planning Committee, then approved by our voters. There was a set agenda for this meeting in which Mr. Blackburn and Mr. Moore went through a presentation, some of that content that we will see tonight. There was a focus on the work associated with special services and early education as well as the pending development of an advisory committee to support our master facilities plans. With the ongoing work being done on our master facilities planning, there's been a shift in the schedule and scope of some of the projects, but the BOC agreed that these were consistent with the priorities and planning presented to the board and approved by the voters. I felt that the general consensus of the committee was appreciative of the effort by Mr. Blackburn and his team to more efficiently and effectively manage the bond funds, but then we will also hear directly from the BOC when they provide their required annual update to the trustees this coming September. And our next meeting of the BOC will be in October for that. The second committee that I participated in was our Board Policy Committee. We met on July 25th and the other members present that form up that subcommittee are Carolyn Benavides, Eliana Garza Rojas, and then myself. We met with administration to review the recommendations from Tasby on the policy update number 123, which is actually in our consent agenda tonight as item H, I think, I probably shouldn't have said it if I didn't know for sure, but so that update that we reviewed and discussed includes updates to 12 local policies relating to local governance, business policies, personnel policy, instruction policies, student, and a community and government relations. There were various recommendations, some were recommended for deletion because they're incorporated into other policies in our manual, adding some cross references, and then as a note, the district is already operating under the majority of these recommended changes. However, some changes will require modifications to administrative processes and this is all detailed in the consent agenda with the buck. We also reviewed policy DEC Local on compensation and benefits and determined that a minor change is needed to align the policy with the employee handbook, so nothing new, we're following that in the handbook, we just needed to align policy. And it's my expectation or assumption based on... And it's my expectation or assumption based on some other comments that I think we're going to meet later this month or soon, so we'll have another one. That's it from me.
Thank you, you're there. Eliana?
There we go. I met with the Educational Foundation. I did my recent onboarding last week, which was very exciting. We have a lot of amazing things that are going to happen for our schools, for our kids, and for our staff, and I am so excited to keep doing the work. Thank you, Mary.
Any other?
So we are on the Board Policy, Board Training Policy Committee, and which consists of Eliana, Carolyn, and myself. This committee is looking at revising our current policy of how board members can access training or what training board members can access and who would approve that. So we researched nine local districts. Some are very encouraging of board members having as much training as possible, others had nothing written at all. We, in general, like Garland ISD's training policy, so we're going to look at that and modify that to meet our needs. So we meet again next week.
Excellent, anyone else? I apologize that I did not know, I was not made aware that there was going to be any reports tonight, so I'm glad that there was, and we look forward to putting this, at this point, in our agendas on a regular basis so that we can get information from you all about the good work you're doing with our committees. All right, now we'll go down to the district den entrance.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you to our board, really excited about our committee work that we set place last year. Cassandra Hatfield and all of us came together and designed our committee work because the board does more than just sit up here. They're researching and doing lots of great work and serving, so thank you all for your committee reports. So our district update tomorrow, I mean, not tomorrow, I keep thinking today's Friday, but we do work this Friday, our four-day weeks are gone. So on Saturday, this Saturday is our Great Back to School Fest. Want to thank Katrina Spotsfield and Communications because they have worked so hard. So at R.L. Turner, from 9:00 to 12:00 this Saturday, we have over 50 community vendors that are supporting our school district, so it's going to be a great day. We have backpacks to give away to our students, we have haircuts, we have supplies, and of course, the board table, they're going to design our next holiday card or greeting card of some kind. So we're excited about that. To let everybody know, our first day of school is August 12th, and yesterday was the first day back, our first day our webmasters came back. So the website and the campus websites will be updated with when their back-to-school events are happening. So they had a big meeting yesterday. And really excited, I want to thank our curriculum team, our Growing Greatness, which is our training for all our teachers. We had over 1,500 teachers show up and we had 260 sessions offered for them to learn. So it was a great day and I want to thank everybody for what they did on that. So that's all I have.
Thank you, it's exciting times. I remember all the different ways that we were trying to get our kids ready for school, lots of times.
Yes.
Now we're going to get an update from PTA and Stacy, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Eldridge, President Shackman, and esteemed board. I want to start with the PTA motto, "To make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children." The PTA year starts today, August 1st, and I am proud to serve as president of the CFB ISD Council of PTAs this year. The best way to join a PTA is by going to joinpta.org, which is up and active as of today. You can join any of the local PTAs through that website. Another way to support multiple PTAs in the district is to get a champion membership through our council PTA website store that is not open yet. The bylaws and everything with any dues, changes, just got released from Texas PTA today, so our treasurer needs a little bit of time to update those. There is a champion membership, there you join all 36 of our local PTAs at one time. We also have feeder memberships where you can join a full feeder pattern to one of our high schools. I do want to thank President Shackman for being our first champion member, although a little bit early before it was supposed to be open yet, but thank you for being our first champion of all 36 of our PTAs. Last month, we participated in the launch PTA conference. There were PTAs from all over Texas that were here in the Dallas area for training all weekend. We had a great turnout, we had 30 PTA members from our school district attend, which was, I think, one of our highest, if not the highest, attendance rate for our district. We, as a council, received an onstage award in recognition for the Council Golden Apple Leadership Circle, Making a Difference, Good Standing Medalist, and as an outstanding council platinum award, which is a pretty big award for our council, which is only, we can only do with the help of all of our schools, PTAs, our school board, and our administration. We also had two of our local PTAs awarded onstage with the Platinum Voice for Every Child, Country Place and Rosemead Elementary Schools, had at least one PTA member for each child at that school, which is a really hard award to achieve, and we're hoping to get even more schools to accomplish that this year. We got to show off our, together, all 30 of us in our new council PTA t-shirts, which if you've seen any of the pictures on the website, they're red with the state of Texas and all our schools listed on it, and we'll have those for sale on our website shortly if people are interested in getting that shirt. This year, we'll be kipping off a new thing for us, which is monthly awards for different challenges for our PTAs. Our first award, which will be awarded in September at the school board meeting, will be for the best back-to-school event. We'll have a committee that will choose who the winners are, we'll have one award for our elementary schools and another one for our secondary schools, so all our middle and high schools. We'll have more details sent to the local PTAs shortly about what they need to do to submit for the potential for winning those awards. Okay, our first district PTA extravaganza event will be on September 28th at the Watten Center. This will be open to all the school, local PTA boards, as well as anyone interested in finding out more about PTAs, welcome to attend. We'll have a small vendor fair, as well as some training stations and activities that morning. Our National PTA Reflections Contest is kicking off now as soon as school opens. This year's theme is Accepting Imperfection, so we're hoping we'll have some entries from all of our schools. This year is an advocacy year for Texas PTA and PTA is really at its heart an advocacy organization. There will be a rally day in Austin on Monday, February 24th, where over thousands of voices will come together in support of our public schools. We're hoping we'll have a good attendance and more details about the event and our participation as CFB ISD to that event coming up for everybody, so we'll be communicating that as well. And I just want to thank you all for your continued support and advocacy, sorry, for our children. Together we are PTA and I do want to thank everybody for your support and continued support for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Omen. Let me encourage you, join PTA, they make a difference for our kids. You don't have to have a child in the school who's PTA you're joining, so find one of your local schools, join that PTA, it helps and makes a difference. Now we're going to have an update from the Education Foundation.
Good evening, Mr. Shackman, Board of Trustees, Dr. Eldridge. Thank you for this opportunity for this special presentation to you and to our community this evening. I am Mary Lovell and I'm proud to be the chair of our Educational Foundation. It's been a busy summer, so I will limit my remarks to three significant activities that we've been doing this summer. The first relates to our new board members. I'm so pleased to share that our new process for encouraging community members to nominate themselves or community leaders to join the Educational Foundation was very successful. We had more candidates from different parts of the city and sign up to be considered for trustee, not for trustee, sorry, for board service. Of course, we could not add all of them, but we are adding an exceptional class in this upcoming year, and they will begin their term September 1st. They exemplify leadership, passion for our schools, and they're the best of our community. So your remarks this evening were especially appropriate. Doug Birdside is an attorney with Purdue-Brandon Fielder, Collins &amp; Mott, he will be joining our board, he's been on, he's an experienced member of ISD foundations, and I was, I had fun with him on our award bus when we were making our surprise award of grants last spring. Michael Gallup's, of course, many of you know, he's president of the CEO and CEO of the Metrocrest Chamber of Commerce. Victor Johnson is a community outreach coordinator with Prosperity Bank, he's an author and professional coach, and he's a mentor of some of our children in CFB. Keena Mack is our banker with Frost Bank. Jan Rug, many of you also know, she is manager of public affairs with Atmos Energy Corporation. Sylvia Wise is the director of alumni strategy and relationships with Dallas College, Brookhaven Campus. Janie Worst is the chair of the Credit Union of Texas Board of Directors, and she too joined us on our prize patrol, which was a lot of fun. It gave Doug and Janie a real inside look at our campuses and what their needs were and how they're celebrated. And finally, but not least, Eliana Garza-Rosas will be joining as our trustee member, and she will be a full board member, we're a separate 501(c)(3) organization, and we hope our community considers the Educational Foundation their charity of choice when they want to support our schools. Our returning board members in this class include Carolyn Benavides, Dr. Linda Braddy, who is the CEO of American Red Cross, North Texas region, she was the chair of our nominating committee, and I need, you need to know that she's been so busy with crisis after crisis in the North Texas area, we're really pleased to have her leadership, unwavering leadership for our board, Catherine Carlin and Beth Martini. We also want to acknowledge and thank our board members who will be retiring from our board this term. Jim Weichel, Senior Vice President of Washington Federal Bank, he's been finance committee member extraordinaire for many, many years, and he was a steady hand in council during some really challenging times for us. Jeanette Papadopoulos, Facebook, next to Carolyn, she's probably the Facebook extraordinaire and social media queen, she was vice president of our program committee. So that's item number one. Item number two, we are excited to be planning the Teacher of the Year Celebration, our planning is underway. Some of you may remember, our previous fundraiser was Unsung Hero Breakfast, which was recognized outstanding teachers across the district, but the last time we were able to have that was in the fall of 2019. So we're getting back in the role of hosting a major fundraiser, we're inviting community to support us, we're working on our development plan, and we'll be greeting community supporters August 6th with a kickoff event at Joe's Pizza at Amici on August 6th, so we're really excited about that. It will provide an opportunity for donors to learn more about our foundation, it'll be very informal, meet and greet, and we're really excited about that. And finally, I'm sure none of you have a family member or friend who just couldn't wait till their birthday or the holiday to discover their special surprises, maybe they went into closets or looked under the bed. In my family, I was that one. It's been so hard for me to keep this exciting news a secret, and I am really excited to share it with all of you and with our community. You already know that the Educational Foundation has supported our students' supply needs with a $1,000 donation for the Back to School Fest. This evening, I'm excited to share with you that our community, and our community, that the Educational Foundation will be awarding each CFB ISD principal $250 for a Great Start Award. These funds will allow the principal to fund some high-need areas that our tax dollars simply cannot support. Donna Wald, our executive director, will be making arrangements with Dr. Eldridge to make sure that those principals understand the criteria for the award expenditures, but we're, we've been blessed, even without a fundraiser, with community members coming and wanting to support our schools, and I just can't tell you how exciting this is. So this concludes my remarks. Any questions? No? Great, thank you.
Mary, thank you. Please extend our entire board's appreciation and thanks on a regular basis for what the foundation is doing. You also, like with PTA, are making a difference every day in classrooms. Excited about that start fund that's being provided to principals, thank you for that. Next on our agenda is Audience for Guests, but before we get there, we're going to take a pause and just short pause to take it 7:35 now, some 25, and so we'll pause for 10 minutes. If you can't stay and you need to go, you're welcome to. If you want to stay, we'd love to have you here, but we'll be back in 10 minutes. to have you here. But we'll be back in 10 minutes. To item number five, our Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is a tool that the board uses to approve a number of things that are routine items. We do that by combining them together in a single vote. It's We also, doing tonight for the first time, we're using a brand-new system that I encouraged us to do, and I'm messing it up more than anybody. Okay, so the non-action items for discussion, number four. Yeah, so first on the list is our Safety and Security update, and Rachel, we're going to turn it over to you.
Good evening, President Shackman, Dr. Eldridge, and Board of Trustees. Tonight, I will be updating you on the intruder audits conducted by TEA via Region 10. As you can see, 100% of our campuses in CFB ISD received an intruder audit with no findings. A finding is a deficiency that requires a corrective action. With the number of campuses in our district, we receive intruder audits every month. I would like to commend all of our campuses and security staff for being vigilant with exterior door security. And I'm actually missing this slide. This is not the most recent presentation, so I apologize for that. But new for the 24-25 school year will be TEA's District Vulnerability Assessment, or the DVA. We've been promised by TEA that all districts will receive a DVA this year. We've not been notified how many campuses will be touched. However, the Superintendent's Office will be notified in advance by TEA when the audits will be scheduled. And not new to our district is one of our part-timers, Rodney Corson. He was a full-time security officer, then retired, and has been working in our department part-time since 2020 to support Maria and our Patrol Division. We're going to repurpose his position as a campus auditor, and the goal is that every campus will be audited every month randomly. If all exterior doors are secure, the auditor will test front-entry doorbell procedures. Campus admins will receive an informal report after each audit, and the goal is to keep campuses vigilant after they receive their Region 10 audit. Lastly, our department would like to extend its gratitude to the board for always supporting our mission and needs. Your proactive actions and investments in safety and security initiatives demonstrate your genuine care and responsibility towards the well-being of everyone in our CFB family. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Are there any questions from board members? Yes.
Ms. Freeman, I just want to say congratulations to our amazing security team and campuses. While I'm not surprised, I know the efforts and initiatives and protocols, I mean, I could like make a laundry list of things you guys have done over the last few years are making a difference, and it is quite commendable to have no findings, no corrective actions, and 100%. That is amazing.
Thank you very much.
And I'm so proud, and I think our parents should be proud, and our parents should feel like we are doing everything possible to create a safe learning environment, and we know that it starts with that. And so I just want to thank you, and please thank your team, because you guys are doing great work, and I look forward to our continued partnership.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Freeman, again, I echo what Ms. Hatfield has said, and safety is always a major priority for us, and you help us make it happen. And so please tell all people in your department we say thank you.
Thank you so much.
And now a construction update. Mr. Blackburn?
Good evening, Mr. Shackman, Dr. Eldridge, members of the board. Just have a quick update on some of the things that have been going on this summer. Just a reminder here of the overall timeline. We're looking at the bond work in three major buckets of renovations, replacement campuses, and safety and security. And we've made some progress in all of those. Just as a quick reminder, we have special services scope that's happening at 24 out of the 34 schools in our district. We're excited about being able to make a difference there. We've been investing a lot of time with the Assistant Superintendent for Special Services, Sarah Rowland, and her staff to develop standards that we are working to implement at each of our campuses, whether elementary, middle, or high school. You can see tonight, we're going to be talking a little bit about the sensory space, which I wanted to highlight. This is the elementary school standard that we're working towards in different campuses. This is the middle school standard, the general arrangement of spaces and the adjacencies. And this is the high school standard. So the sensory rooms that we're going to be looking at occur at the elementary and middle school campuses. And these are a couple of renderings of what these spaces will look like when we finish those, that work. You can see they have a lot of different elements that special services staff have specifically selected to help them work with the students. And so we're excited to bring these, to these campuses. We really feel like it'll be a real, a real positive effect for them, a great tool for our teachers. We've also worked at several campuses installing playgrounds. This is Freeman Elementary. And just as an aside, for all the campuses where we're installing new playground equipment, we are installing a canopy to go along with that playground equipment. This is Freeman. This is Landry. We're also doing a couple of roof replacements this summer. This is a roof replacement at Field Middle School. Here is the playground at Stark. Here, and they're also doing a roof replacement at Stark. This is McLaughlin-Strickland. And air conditioning unit replacement at McLaughlin-Strickland as well was ongoing this summer. And the playground at Blair. We are expecting to get the remainder of the canopies tomorrow, actually, so we're hopeful that we'll be able to have all the canopies installed before the start of school. So we're glad for that. We've also just completed the replacement of the turf at Standridge, the respray of the track at Standridge. So all the fall activities there will have the benefit of refreshed facilities there, so we're excited about that. And then also have a quick update for the progress that we've made on the bond fiber improvements. If you have technical questions, I'll refer them to Robin, but I'll give you the high-level stuff. So here's an overall view of the network upgrades. You can see they're making, they're planning it very carefully, and we're, we have not started construction yet. They're still working on the engineering, getting the permits set up, planning out all the work to do it in a way that we'll be able to continue operation without interruption and still improve our network overall. So we're looking forward to that. And let's see, and that was it? So any questions?
Thank you so much for your update. I also want to thank you for the canopy thing. It was a huge question of mine. Our playground needs to last forever, right? Because we don't ever get so much money. And I just want to thank you for doing that so quickly. I appreciate that for the safety of our kids, for the amount of time that I spend outside with these babies so they don't burn themselves on the plastic. I appreciate that. So thank you. Thank you to your team, and thank you for all of the work you've done over the summer.
Yes, thank you so much. I was going to ask about the sensory rooms. Is that at all campuses with Fed students?
It's at the, well, as I pointed out in one of the slides, we're doing special services scope at 24 campuses. And the sensory rooms only occur at elementary and middle school campuses. They're not part of the high school program. So if we're doing work at the campus and it's in elementary or middle, it'll, it should have one of those rooms.
Thank you.
Mr. Blackburn, thank you. It's exciting times. Great stuff. And now we will move to the Consent Agenda. Again, the Consent Agenda is a tool that the board uses to approve a number of routine items with, together with a single vote. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the public notice for this meeting includes a list of all Consent Agenda items, and the board has been provided ample information about these items in advance. Prior to any action taken on the Consent Agenda, board members may request withdrawal of individual items for clarification or discretion. We have a lengthy Consent Agenda in this meeting. Board members, are there any questions or any items that you wish to pull from the Agenda? Hearing none, seeing none, this is an action item. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that the, we approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Thank you. Have a motion about item five. Is there a second? Cassandra Hatfield has seconded the motion. Any discussion? No? Then we will ask for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? And no abstentions, so by a vote of seven in favor, zero against, the Consent Agenda passes as approved. Other items for discussion or action will be at number six. And there were no items removed from the Consent Agenda, so we'll skip item 6A and go to 6B, the amendment for locker room renovations at the natatorium. Do we have a motion for this night? Well, we're going to have a discussion about it. Okay.
Just as a quick summary for what's included in this item, we had some input from the Bond Oversight Committee. There were a couple of things that we'd like to try and take care of at Standridge Stadium. One, so there's three main components. One is improving a locker room space for natatorium use to make it more suitable for the natatorium to take advantage of. So we're looking forward to being able to do that. Second piece is renovating the main concourse home side restrooms in the stands. And the third piece is refreshing the stadium lighting. In particular with the stadium lighting or the athletic field lighting, when we have track and field events, the north end is very dark, and we have to actually rent portable lighting to be able to host events there. So we're going to be able to correct that with this motion. So those are the three main components, and I'm happy to answer any questions. You, if you remember, you first received some detail on the work in the May, I think the May 10th board memo.
My only question was, after this renovation, how much is left in the 2018? I don't need to the penny, but how much money will be left after 2000, in that pot?
Let me check my notes here. All right. We have approximately $26 million unencumbered.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just want to clarify just a bit that this was not the request of the Bond Oversight Committee. These were projects that were on the original presentation in the original 2018 bond that were always planned. We just knew, we didn't know how much money was going to have. And then through the efforts of the team and the bond, and the funds that were managed accordingly through, there was money left over that we could circle back and do those, do those for it. So it was an extra, you know, an extra ask. These were always the desire to be included from the 2018 Citizens Committee. We just, not we, they had to manage it accordingly to be able to fit it, fit it in.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Board members, is there a motion we want to make related to this item? Mr. Botchik?
I move that we approve item 6
I move that we approve item 6B, approving the GMP amendment for locker room renovations for natatorium use, main concourse restroom renovations, and athletic field lighting renovation, and authorize the superintendent or her designate to execute purchases and/or contracts in the best interest of the district.
I have a motion. Is there a second? Ms. Garza-Rosas has seconded. Any discussion? No. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? And no abstentions? So with a vote of seven in favor and none opposed, the motion passes. The next item on our agenda is item C, to consider approved designation for voting delegate for the Tazbeek, TASA General Conference Convention. Board members, some of us are new to this process. Of course, TASBE is an organization that consists of membership and it is member-driven. And every year at our annual convention, there is a review of various rules and procedures and leadership for the organization. Everybody who is a member has the opportunity of selecting a delegate to attend that program and an alternate delegate as well. And a number of us have filled that role at various times. Is there an interest in what else can we answer to help you understand if needed information about the TASA delegates? Well, first of all, let me ask, are there anyone that would like to volunteer? It takes about three hours on Saturday afternoon at the convention. Eliana is volunteering, possibly as our delegate, and then the assistant or alternate, Kim. We have two volunteers, and so is there a motion to approve our volunteers? Cassandra?
I move that for item 6C, consider and approve the designation of a voting delegate and alternate delegate for the TASA-TASBE General Conference, that we appoint Eliana Garza-Rojas as our delegate and Kim Brady as our alternate.
I have a motion. Is there a second? Marjorie is the second. Board members, will vote. All in favor, raise your hand. I'm surprised you're not voting no. With a vote of seven in favor and zero opposed, the motion carries. We've reached a point in our meeting where we are now going to adjourn for closed meeting to discuss a personal matter. It's an employee grievance appeal by Nicholas Ornalis. And deliberate on that, we will come back and report once we have completed what we need to get done. You're welcome to stay, you're welcome to go. The Olympics is on, yeah. All right, we're going to close session.